Let's call the meeting of the Village Board to order at some 32. All trustees will be discussing a turkey art director at present this evening. Have you been lobbying with it? The meeting has been done. Excellent. Welcome, everyone. We appreciate your time and patience since we conduct business in the evening. Item four, special order of business for a consider 2024, 2033 long range plan and provide new industry direction. This is from manager.
Included in your packet tonight is a memo requesting the board's advisement on four different items. One is the lead service line replacement program. The memo goes into a greater level of detail regarding the lead service replacement line program. In general, tonight, I'd want to get the board's feedback as to whether you want to continue with a 20 year replacement plan or consider a 30 year replacement goal. Should you decide to want to consider that 30 year replacement goal, then we would come back to you with some different analytics after taking a look at infrastructure costs over 30 years versus 20, but they would be in large estimate format. So that's number one is I may, I'll break this up to parts. Does anyone have questions? Yep. We'd run the projections. Yeah, that would be a part of the exercise that we would go through. Initially, when the program was approved, it was approved at a 20 year level or 20 year replacement goal level. And, you know, I just want to be cognizant of, again, our prior conversation because it's a question I would ask. You know, what, what's happening? What's palatable? You know, it's the first time that our community is, well, any community is being required to address all the lead service lateral items and meet requirements and benchmarks from the PSC for that. So it's not. It's not a suggestion, but it's a requirement that we will eventually need to meet. So if there were additional thoughts on it, I just thought now will be a good time to ask so that we could prepare accordingly to have that discussion prior to next year's LRP.
Service lines venues. And so we just have such a huge number in terms of capita amount of service. My initial desire to get them up is to get them out as quickly as possible. And, you know, so, you know, 20 years is a long time. However, was there one or two little things that came up that made us think this might take longer? Do you going to be tried for 20 years? It's going to maybe take longer or not an individual concern or is it more just a general as this has been going along? It's starting to look like a longer project than we initially thought.
Well, initially we came out with a 20 year replacement plan and that projection and timeline really came from the finance perspective. Let's get in 20 years and be done, right? Because when you borrow, you're usually borrowing out for 20 years. You know, so I think like through that finance lens, it's easy to see why that correlation of 20 years came across, came through. 30 years from an operationally, like implementing it in the field, 30 years, you know, of course, would seem more palatable, given the fact that we've never replaced at that level or magnitude throughout the village's history. It's a question we just wanted to raise and ask. You know, we note in here that the city has announced a goal to do its lead lines within a 20 year timeframe. You know, it's the first time we're going through this. And not just for Shorewood, but all of the communities, particularly with those who have a significant number. So there's not a right or a wrong answer, but it's definitely something that I wanted to touch. I wanted to check in with you. We can, you know, and that's something that we don't, if we want to say 20, I mean, we're, we're literally not even at year one yet because it's not effective until 2024. We just started ours earlier because of the amount of lead lines that we would have the opportunity to replace this year.
I appreciate what you had to say and for raising that decision point, you know, for me. But I agree with trustee Stonebrand before I'm landing action on 20 versus 30 years. I would want to see what the.
Oh, sure. This is just the touch point to say, do you want to have that discussion? And if so, we'll schedule it.
My preference would be, yeah, to know what the, what the trade offs are because again, yeah, the cost borrow might increase, but if the other, if there's an offset that makes it make sense, great. See your own staff, so I would definitely like to, I would like to have that conversation.
Just a year thing.
I agree. I'd love to see, we love to see the numbers, love to have the conversation, but I think I'd be leaning towards sticking with our 20 year plan. I mean, we do have lead pipes throughout this whole village and the faster we can get them out of the village, the better for our community and the health and the wellness of everybody here in Shorewood. So I'd be more in favor of sticking with an aggressive plan to make sure that we remove all of the lead levels from our community.
Anyone else? I think my question would be if there is the 20 year how it might, I know that we're going to be focused on replacing them as we're doing street reconstruction. And so if switching to a 30 year somehow makes that alignment less practical, then I want to know that. So I guess my, my two questions with moving to 30 years would be, yeah, does it cost us more in the long run? Does it impact statewide, you know, the tax increases? And there was something else, there was another thing that's already been mentioned. So I share those questions. I think, you know, and then regionally, we're the only municipality in the offshore that is going to be in this deep with us. And so in terms of what the standard is and what the expectations of residents, it's really the city of Milwaukee. And I guess Tulsa has some, but I think they have many.
Okay, so I'll move on to the second item. And we've talked about this, I don't, not all of you will recall this because not all of you have been on the board throughout the course of the last five years, but we've repeatedly talked about the sidewalk replacement program. We made significant policy change to that program to implement grinding, which is not accommodated for within special assessments. They were the only things historically we have special assess for it. From a cost benefit standpoint, I don't. It's not, from a business perspective, for me, it's not worth that time, given the amount that we deploy on that to special assess. And so in past years, we've talked about moving forward in the, with future programs and including that within the borrowed funds. So the plan that you have up in front of you now removes that special assessment and includes it within the LRP at 100%. Any questions on sidewalks?
Like the sales tax mark.
Just on that, on what side of the reconstruction you're on. You've already got it done or you've already paid for it?
I mean, right. I guess I'm wondering, so you would, like as a property owner, would you be paying every year for everybody to get their new squares, right? As opposed to when it's your turn, you're just open to village name compared to it anyway.
Correct.
I guess the other question I had was, um, what would the average cost be then? How would it affect taxes on the $340,000? What can we look for in terms of probably tax increase if we take this off the special assessments completely and totally untaxed them? I am inclined to support this because it's a walkable community. But I'm just, I'd like to know.
I don't know what the specific dollar amount is, but this is the most nominal cost in your LRP plan. I know we spend more time from a deployment stand standpoint on this than we do some like major constructions because it's so time intensive. It just. You're going to have to come to a mic. You have to speak into the thing.
That's been dealing with resetting because there are people I don't want to be a sidewalks. So you have to go out and reassess at that time. And on top of that, we're also not replacing the worst ones in the village as sometimes they're not in a single quadrant. They're, they're be all placed. And those ones we don't get to for, let's say, for about two years. So we're out there just asphalting it without actually taking care of it.
Quick, quick poll. So, so this would basically eliminate all of the administrative time and allow you to just.
There would still be some administration to it.
Sure. More so with in dealing with residents individually.
Yeah.
This way you would plan for the year and say, we can spread these out over the course of the year and it's not going to do it.
Yeah, I'm not 100% sure what the vision of project would be, but I'm sure it'd be the goal, top 10 worst or whatever. Take that, then the best will be with the residents. Or third, the business district.
Okay.
For this seems like, you know, public, a public guy, right? You don't, you don't only walk on your own sidewalk squares. So, you know, it's a very interesting to have everybody be saying as well.
I can say that I think it was previous, 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 or there were, I think, two years, two or three years in a row. There was, there was a lot of this kind of stuff and a lot, it was a very popular policy change. And simply, once we got to the point that it was, that's a difficult way to go. It was a matter of like waiting till the quadrants are done so that people aren't getting hit twice too. So I just wanted to inform that, that it's been in conversation and had you in this.
Last item is, and while the board has also provided this direction earlier this year, wanted to just reaffirm the street light system replacement land that you see identified within the LRP. LRP does call for a five year construction timeframe for implementation. So just wanted to make sure that we were, again, for, for me, this is a check in and affirming so that we can tee up this plan correctly for the following year. With that, I do have a fairly bullet pointed possible motion at the bottom that then you have the opportunity to weigh in on.
24 to 2033 long range management plan and per full project implementation schedule noting the village board. Take option one, consider a 20 or 30 year lead service lateral replacement goal in preparation for the next LRP. Affirms eliminating special assessments for the sidewalk replacement program. Ainen affirms inclusion of street light replacement program for a five year construction.
Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any vote?
Please say.
Okay. Motion carries by in favor and one exception. All right, moving on to board meeting, 2022 audit report.
I just want to welcome Anthony. It's his first time here. Dan Berg, who we've seen in previous years, has moved on to a retirement plan. For all the planning that our auditors do, he has moved on to his own new plan. So a welcome here. It's actually ironic, we've worked this year together, but it's all been virtual work. So I finally get the opportunity to meet Anthony in person. So welcome to Village Hall and our Village Board meeting. I'm just going to share my screen because he has a presentation that he'd like to share with you.
Before we fill the line, I'm going to do the last point. I'm going to plan it. It's just that I'm going to put in some documentation from Frank Johnson before asking the votes of those agents. That's why I just.
Thank you. Just remember to speak into the microphone.
Wonderful. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening, present the results of our audit of the village. This is as of for your, this will your end in December 31st, 2022. On the next slide, to briefly list it out here, a listing of the current year engagement team for the village's audit. Again, Anthony Sermini, partner in the audits, also assisting in the audit. It's capital management, senior manager with all of the Senate, senior audit associate, a second bill, audit associate. And then I think very, who, but if you're familiar with, audit director, who transitioned off of the village's engagement this year. Going to our next slide, we'll begin with some financial statement highlights for you. On slide, we'll start off talking about the auditor's report. Always like to highlight for the board that the financial statements do ultimately land as the responsibility of management throughout the process here. Our responsibility as auditors to express an opinion under financial statements based on audit conducted in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards as well as generally accepted governing of auditing standards. The second set of standards that the village was applicable or that were applicable for the village this year were due to your ARPA spending of about 806,000 of federal dollars that were spent from the ARPA program this year, which required the second set of standards. Basically what that entails is somewhere detailed testing of those amounts, separate examination report, as it's called, that'll be provided over that. Following page addresses the, one of the key sections in your annual financial report, the management discussion and analysis. Management discussion and analysis, as you can see here, includes financial highlights, overview of the financial statements, information on your general budget, capital assets, long term debt, as well as looking at future economic trends. Think one of the more valuable things within the management's discussion and analysis or NDNA, not only do you have comparative data as part of that, but you actually have management explanations for why those figures have changed from one year to the next. So you take two years of the financial statements condensed that into the NDNA, provides nice context as part of that as well. In terms of specific information, your statement of net position, you report a unrestricted deficit in your net position for your governmental activities, so mainly due to your large size and your non-capital related debt through your TID activity. Also does include your other postal credit benefit or OPEB payable. Your business type activities does report a positive unrestricted net position. This would be indicated that your water sewer and parking fund or your intended, your funds that are intended to be self sustaining are operating as intended, they're covering depreciation costs, other types of costs that flow into that. Noting on the statement of net position as well as the statement of activities on the next slide here. These are presented on the economic resources measurement focus of this or full accrual schedules. This means all of your capital assets, your long term debt, any of those amounts are incorporated into those schedules here. We'll talk about the, there's a key difference here in a moment that'll impact that. So if your governmental activities, you had increased, TID revenues continue or contributing to your increase in that position. Also from a favorable increase to your net position standpoint, your capital asset, the long term debt activity, long term debt to the tune of $3.2 million from your interrepayments, as well as capital asset activity of about $625,000. What that is, is the village's investment in capital assets outpaced your depreciation on your existing capital assets of fiscal 22. You also had that favorable changes for your pension, other postal credit benefits in between about 800,000. For your business type activities, which throughout your reporter presented on the full accrual schedule there. Your water increased 214,000, sewer 555,000, and your parking was flat on $11,000 of an increase there. On your fund financial statements, so here's where we look at the difference between economic resources measurement focus, the full accrual and the modified accrual basis of accounting and the current financial resources here. For your general fund, your revenues, expenditures remain relatively constant in fiscal 22 and your unassigned fund balance is a little over 40% of your fund expenditures for the year. So you're compliant with your current policy on that. From another fund standpoint, again, revenues and expenditures relatively constant there. You did have an increase in your overall fund balances as part of that. Now, one of the things that we did note this year, and this relates to the basis of accounting. We looked at the, the light horse development as part of this and a few other transactions that were impacted by this. But you had a prior period adjustment related to a majority of that sum in TID for, so $2.7 million here. Really what that was is a balance sheet classification or balance sheet reclassification that was necessary this year to move those related to the long term receivable that you reported in TID for, but offset that in, instead of that being your fund balance and being perceived as available for spending at that time. Those amounts really become available as those dollars are collected on that long term receivable. So again, really just a shift there to properly classify that amount there. So that's what's happening related to that prior period adjustment. Two additional items to note are, we also issued a governance, governance communication and management letter here. Then the governance communication, just a few key items here. We did implement statement number 87. On the next slide here, you'll see does a listing of the impacts here as well as the pension OPEB estimates being these significant estimates. In that one journal entry that was related to the long term receivables and the reclassifications that they noted earlier there. A few other summarized items there that I won't cover. Last few items for my presentation this evening. On the next slide, you'll see within our management letter, there's three types of findings that we could have as part of the audit process. A material weakness, significant deficiency or deficiencies or other matters here. Please to report that we have no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies to report this year. This combined with your minimal number of adjustments, if that one entry that we posted here could give you some comfort that the financial information you receive from management is reliable. As noted here, we have a segregation of duties comment that's been present as part of our correspondence for some time. Smaller entities with limited staff, oftentimes we have those comments there. Not to say that you don't have other compensating controls in place, which is something that we highlight as part of our audit process. Items noted in the current year audit, oh, we had two comments for the current year. One related to the bankrupt reconciliation process. Primarily believe that to be a timing issue with certain amounts that are flowing through related to various credit card transactions there. We discussed that with, with staff and intended to help and work through that to see if you can identify what those amounts are. We're not talking significant dollar amounts that any of those months is part of that process there. It was just something that with the heavily liquid nature of cash, just making sure that those controls are strong there. Able to look at that and understand what might be causing any of those amounts there. Also noted this year, the unavailable revenues entry that we talked about are related to primarily in TID for and the prior year segregation of duties happened there. With that, having to answer any questions, I do want to thank staff for their response to this and efforts throughout the process. There's a lot of information that changes as part of the process, detailed process. Again, with that, happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Yes, trustee Stonebrand. So if you, in layman's terms, explain the unavailable revenue. So we've never done this before, but for some reason, like you may, you use the word reclassification, but in the explanation here, I don't see reclassification with.
Are you looking at the management discussion and analysis section? So I believe, and then Duncan Johnson jumped in here or men's really well, if I missed this here, but I believe in the paragraph notes and the last sentence, the, the restatement, I'm looking if I think of the correct paragraph there.
Revenue recognition policy and ensure injunctions are recorded, recorded in accordance with policy.
So you're looking, you're looking at the, the board communication document. So, yeah, so the, the, the nature of that is primarily impacted by the difference in the availability of that revenue. So village has basically, without getting too into the nuances of governmental accounting and the differences between your government wide statements, which are your first two statements. So the statement of net position, the statement of activities, and then your fund financial statements, which are your, your, you know, your general fund statement, your governmental funds, balance sheet, statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes of fund balance there. Basically, those funds are not considered to be available on the current financial resources focus there. So previously they were sitting in fund balance. Again, the journal entries, correct. So that, so basically moving those out of fund balance into an unavailable revenue. And then those amounts, they were offsetting anyways of what was happening. So basically, when those receivables were being collected, the village was increasing the cash, decreasing that receivable balance. Fund balance was already impacted by that, so it was sitting in your equity, your fund balance, if you will, there. Now, what will happen is that cash will come in, you'll recognize a corresponding revenue for that as those amounts come in, in the TID for, and then you'll have a corresponding decrease to your receivable, the unavailable revenue, which is considered a deferred income liability type account there. So again, it's just a matter of as we looked at that transaction, determining from an availability standpoint there that those amounts did not meet the criterion for recognition in the fund balance at the fund level. However, there's no impact on your government wide because that's a full accrual schedule. So it's, it's more of a difference between full accrual recognition, full accrual method versus the modified accrual there. No changes in terms of the collectability of any of the receivables there, just a classification. That's what I mean then.
I guess it just means I've been done TID now since 1995, right? And you probably get a fair auditor for how many years. Suddenly now we, it was one TID and we've had this pick up.
Understood completely. And it's, it's when we have, whether it myself taken over the audit this year, I was one of the things that I hadn't been involved previously with that. So in taking a look at things closer there, certain times when, even when we change internally, we ask questions of that and, and go through that process there. There has been some changes from a pronouncement standpoint and the classification that came out that probably would have warranted a look at this a little bit earlier than this year. However, it was something that came up in my review on it this year, discussed it with our quality control team there. Going forward, I think the village, you know, has developed a consistent approach to look at these transactions and look at these things on a go forward basis. So I view this as really a one year correction to these amounts here. And then the ability to understand and look at these transactions and make sure that the differences between the two recording methodologies are, you know, from full accrual, modified accrual standpoint or flow.
Thank you for your fresh eyes. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. Yeah, do we, there was, do we accept your, or is it just?
Just a presentation.
Okay. We have, moving on to identify consent agenda. Is there, I'm guessing that you want to go by that? Are there any other, is there motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'm making a motion to approve consent agenda.
Sorry.
Okay, any discussion? Please report H, she's going to be happy. By H? And by F? Any other? All right. All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any, a host? All right, motion carries, moving on to item six, I was removed from the consent agenda. Item five F, consider recommendation regarding current extensions and advisory by claims in 2023 at work average research design. This is coming to us from the works committee with the recommendation. There's a note on our packet, we've had a lot of discussion on this, several meetings and a lot of info from the for the year, do you want to, from the committee?
You know, I really don't think I have too much more to add than from what you just kind of went through. You know, we've gone through the process, we've, we've gone back to the committee. You know, I really don't think I have too much more to add than from what you just kind of went through. Uh you know, we've gone through the process, we've we've gone back to the committees. And uh we've had really great sort of uh community discussion about um this this, which is going to be a big change in the community. And I think after the research, after discussions, um a lot of folks in the community have really kind of rallied around this concept and have been willing to to try going forward. So uh you know, outside of that, you know, um I know that we may have Sandy Pendleton online here, would be interested to see if there's any comments here on this topic. Um but outside of that, it's uh you know, it's something that we are supporting moving forward.
Thank you.
I would say that briefly that, you know, through through our discussion, then this is a good example of how um well, our village government works and how our committee process works. You know, this was on an advanced timeline and this went to the personal spaces committee, the technical safety subcommittee. They reviewed it thoroughly and did a lot of independent research. Um and came back and and in the support of the advisory bike lane layout. Um I think part of what we're looking at with this new layout is really just a a more well organized version of what's on the most residential streets. That was a big part of our discussion is that most of the streets in this village do not have a center line. Most of them also don't have painted bike lanes or painted parking lanes, but they have the exact same rules of the road as this road would have on any other residential street. Um and so I think it's it's it works on my street, works on all the streets around my house. You know, I think this setup slows traffic down, causes drivers to come to a stop. Uh let other drivers through, it it forces drivers to slow down and that's you know, almost always number one priority. So I'm all in favor of this.
Justin, you're saying?
Yeah, I just wanted to make one kind of follow-up to Justin Link here. Uh the bike event committee came in and I feel like there was not a lot of support for this um initially. But they went back and had the discussion and did the research and they came back and there were overwhelming, so the overwhelming supporting uh supportive of this of this new configuration. So that was really encouraging and I really appreciated that uh that kind of internal discussion that they had.
Would like to speak this evening? Yes, speaking, come to the microphone, say your name.
My name's Rose Williams. I'm a twenty-five college student. I'm also a member of the park and public spaces committee. Um and I've had this discussion obviously with members of the committee um extensively. And this is just the train is going and and there's, I'm I'm not going to be able to stop it, but I just I just wanted to raise some caution about this. That it's, when you compare this to other residential streets in Shorewood, other residential streets don't get buses. And I live in the portion between Downer and Maryland where there's heavy, heavy bus tracks, there's can be heavy truck tracks. You know, I I think it's a wonderful motion. I am very skeptical that it's my new work. And and there are the two things that I've asked for. Is number one, that it be really evaluated. Yes, and I know that the fellow from from the city of Milwaukee said, yes, there'd be regular evaluations, but I I think that's really important. And to again, to continually ask the people who live on this street. And to actually district interest. The second one is letting people know about this, and this is not just letting people from Shorewood know. I think this is used by, you know, overwhelmed by all sorts of people. And and the other thing is the timeline, and I'm not sure what that time limit is, but apparently Stratford, who knows better than I, is going to be out of commission for the rest of the year. Um and if that's the case, starting this project can put Edgewood out of commission, even if it's a short time. Particularly when classes start in session, and you know, I think is another uh as the first business. So I just wanted to express my concern as a as as a resident of on Edgewood. Uh even though I love the idea of bike lanes, I just don't think this is a nice street for it. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Uh my name is Jeff Morris. I'm a thirty-two-year resident of Shorewood, all thirty-two years, right on Edgewood, at the corner of Shepherd and Edgewood.
Oh, and you're specific, you're Ashland.
Thirty-nine oh one North Shepherd Avenue. And it's it's not that I'm anti-bike. Uh my father was a close friend of Dick Burke, founder of Trek Bicycle. He was on his board. All my kids have Trek Bicycles, I have a Trek Bicycle, my wife has a Trek Bicycle. I consider myself a responsible cyclist. I think most Shorewood residents are responsible cyclists. They wear helmets, they have blankets on the back of their bike at night. They don't race. But unfortunately, that is not the type of biker that you're going to attract to this quarter when you mark it as a bike lane and then all of a sudden starts popping up on everybody's GPS and this is a bike-friendly lane. Who are we going to get now? We're going to get the yahoos who I run into red it on the path that we're supposed to be sharing. The yahoos who come in there, red alone, wannabe outfits with their helmets on, head down, barreling along as fast as they can go.
We can just um stay focused on your concern and 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 reserve discretion of groups of people or individuals.
Excuse me, I I'm not allowed to suggest that there are bicyclists who are irresponsible, who ride too fast, they have their earplugs in, they don't even hail you and say, coming on your left, they just motor right on by you. That is not the type of bicyclist that I want out in front of my house. This proposal, and I appreciate all the work that was put in by Sandy and this group. And I think decisions are to be made on data. But I think the report misrepresents the data that are actually in the reports that reference in the footprints. For example, the report suggests that traffic is, there's a high level of bicycle traffic. But the only data that they reference is some website where you can go on and you can pull up a heat map. If you go up that heat map, you will see that the only place that it gets hot is west of Maryland. Up to Maryland, it's the evening. There's not a lot of traffic. And I sit right in my front lawn on my terrace. The people who come by are casual, responsible Shorewood bikers. I don't have any problem with that. Second thing. The report suggests that as Justin, when you adjusted that uh EBLs are the dance, they're going to stop the traffic, slow it down. That's not what the research that's attached says. Let me just read to you from the reports. The report on what's the experience in Europe, which has been at this a whole lot longer than anybody in America. They report on three studies. One study, uh study twenty sites. Said the results indicated that crashes were reduced by twenty-five percent untreated roads. But here's the big caveat. However, the exact effect of ELR alone could not be determined due to the addition of other traffic calming measures. Speed bumps. Signs that say you're supposed to only go twenty-five miles an hour. On our screen, the first place that you encounter a street sign that says you're supposed to go twenty-five miles an hour is halfway down the block to it's south of Downer. Between Downer and Maryland. When you come off Lake Drive, there's not a sign. And I sit there and I spent half of my parenting life screaming at people who would whiz by over forty and fifty miles an hour, and they still do. They still this study says. This European study, twenty sites, says ELR alone ain't going to slow people down without putting speed bumps or something else in. Next study, fifty-five ELRs in twenty-three Danish municipalities. Says the most significant reduction is thirty-nine percent property damage. Crashes coupled with ELRs with additional speed-reducing measures resulted in a statistically significant decrease. Says in comparison, a non-significant thirteen percent increase was found in ELRs without speed reduction. Last study. Talks about two thousand four, where the studies accordingly, it it found twenty percent pure uh crashes. But it notes the Danish Road Agency refused the research and concluded that it was not possible to determine whether the edge lanes contributed to the reduction of crashes because they were always more oftentimes coupled with other speed reduction measures.
Thank you, Mr. Rose, can you uh?
Uh sure. And and what the the data also showed quite clearly is, as you expect, you put a lane in. And so the biker is not up against the curb and over here, they get closer to cars. When you combine cars that can go any slower, they're going to be closer to bikes. It's only logical, you're not going to have true crash if this is studying shows. Speeds not going to decrease. What I ask people to consider is do your experiment down where there's actually existing buses. Do your experiment from Downer over there, see how that goes. Oh. My neck of the woods, you don't need it. I mean, nobody's complaining. It's funny why, nobody even parks after that one streets. I don't want irresponsible bikers who speed along coming onto my street. Um and lastly, you know, I would note I read the report and I was very impressed with it. But I noted at the beginning that apparently the the committee's charge was, don't come back with a recommendation for permanent bike lanes. And yet, that's exactly what they did. At the very end, they say, in five years, we need permanent bike lanes. Well, I don't know how you're going to do permanent bike lanes. And the and the premise is that somehow uh you know, the roadway gets torn up and it's terrible. If anybody could just drive up and down Edgewood, it's torn up right into the turf. It doesn't have anything to do with traffic pattern. It has to do with something called Wisconsin winter and removing snow from streets. The whole street is screwed up. So you're not going to be able to somehow make for a nice smooth pathway. It's just not going to happen. And I don't know how you're going to do it without widening the road, tearing down trees. I sure hope that ever something for the board, they give long consideration to uh preserving trees over preserving somebody's butt on their bike. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Any further discussion or is there a motion? Is there anyone online? I mean, in the um who's joining us virtually? Right, that's the anyone? Is there a motion?
Oh, I just had a question about the uh part of the proposed motion that talks about the uh Parks and Public Spaces Committee will be charged with the development of an advisory bike education program for distribution in various social media. And I'm, do we have any idea when this is going to be done? Because I'm I'm just thinking you know, the committee will be, I believe, next Tuesday, I mean, once a month. If this is done in September, October, I would think that would I'd like to see some shared responsibility in this moment, I guess. Parks and Public Spaces Committee be uh involved with the developments with advisory, I I mean, honestly, community and public relations or community and business relations um. Assistant manager, Lucy Anderson. Um I'm just as a liaison to this group, I know they want to be involved, but they'll lay this all at their feet and then we don't, you know, we haven't said, are they getting money and like, is it all going to be free?
Yeah, I remember the
We did talk about, yeah, we talked about it in the um, in the committee. And I I think we could, I'd be happy to, we were charged to involve. They just offered to help up with language and things like that for us. Um and they want, you know, they wanted to participate in that.
I guess so.
It's time to change the language.
It was still all over the channel, our, you know.
Yeah, it is collaborative.
Yeah, yeah.
And I, it's again, I'm just trying to think, you know, minds of the essence here, but to lose point. Will this be done after both our advisory class during session? Here since the end of the, this is project.
Oh, Mr. Yeah, you're here.
Not entirely sure. I would probably start soon as soon as chance, prove the layout, this probably be shortly, I think it's maybe it starts. I I thought they said August from, yeah, I was like, I thought it'd be done by the end of the year.
That's something that you can look at into and let us know, that'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah, it's just for resurfacing and I thought we were able to do some of the things, but.
Well, that's right, it changed from reconstruction.
Yeah, that's not reconstruction.
That's why it moved up.
Yeah, and you know, since we were fifty-fifty with Washington, you know, more or less, so we had to.
It'll be on there, you know.
But we're pretty much done.
So.
I did, I did see um.
Yes. So, Mr. Pendleton, thank you for joining us. You have addressed the board several times. So if you have a brief comment, this added.
Yeah.
I'm wrong.
Thank you very much, President Kay. My name is Sandy Pendleton. I'm in the tree bond two-nine North Frederick Avenue. I'm also a member of the uh Parks and Public Spaces Committee and I'm also a co-chair, sorry, vice chair of the pedestrian bicycle safety. I rise to make just the following comments, two or two comments. One, I appreciate people have let uh materials that I've submitted. I appreciate that. Two, I'm probably the only person in this room who was ridden and driven on a advisory bike lane configured street. Exactly. Okay, there was another person, good. My reaction when I was out in Boston, Massachusetts last week, driving on uh the two streets that are configured in Cambridge, Massachusetts with advisory bike lanes was so what? There's no cereal line here. Big deal. It's just like all of these other streets I've ridden on and driven on in Shorewood and countless other communities that do not have a center line. It wasn't any way confusing, it wasn't in any way weird. Therefore, what the board will be approving does not, if it accepts the recommendation of the Parks and Public Spaces Committee, is to adopt something that many communities, some seventy communities around the country, sorry, some there's some seventy streets around the nation, various communities, but adopt this proposal. And they have an impromptu. So I would ask that you approve the recommendation. Thank you.
Very much in this time.
I could read it. I move that the Edgewood resurfacing project include advisory bike lanes, curb extensions at the non-avenue intersection and the Parks and Public Space Spaces Committee um be involved with the development of an advisory bike lane and education program for distribution to the village's various social media and communication channels.
I noticed that he used involved instead of charged with. Is that, uh, did you deviate purposely from that?
Deviate purposely just to be clear that they're not exclusively doing it, that it's a prep of village effort, because they're not like we're not charging them going out and handing credit to yours. Okay. If, I'll second that.
All right, people, first from Justin Lin, second from Joe Peter Stank. Any final discussion? All right, hearing none. All of us in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any hesitation? Any reviews? All right, motion carries, six zero. Thank you everyone for your time. That's moving back to five H. That's it, okay?
Thank you. I was just like, I think was not able to go to the meeting in the village center if someone else was on. I guess I will be confused by um we talked, they believe in, well, has in um twenty twenty, Phil, and who mentions um these streets. Uh the county is doing big communities and saying say something. My question is we have, you know, we have a new I've been comprehensive plan coming out. And I'm just wondering
And I'm just wondering, how many different plans we're going to have going?
Yeah, you're really, they're coordinated. They, they layer on each other. So it's, it's. It's not redundant. I know that it sounds redundant, but. Um, it's not in that, in that way.
Do we need or want them all is my other question. So. If we, sure, if I can add to the county, um. But what are we going to get from them? With, what, when it comes to the form of a grant? I'll see, like, if we get our, if we do our own complete streets, could we do it ourselves without hiring a consultant? Get what we want and have local control? I guess I don't understand what, what the option here is with the county.
Right.
Because last fall, there was no cost. I've not seen their transparency that I'd like to see from them.
Yes, that's unfortunate.
My apologies, President. Okay, I just wanted to alert each other the fact that Director Grupentraug is online and he's been attending those meetings. So. I'm not sure if he has any thoughts he'd like to share.
Oh, thank you for reminding. Yeah, so I, I do recall him saying that there would be, uh. Um, potentially, I think they were forecasting five thousand dollars. It was, you know, uh, not set at that time. Also, it is local control. Um, what this does is they're leveraging, um, their ability to draw down federal dollars. And then once we have a plan. Which is going to be our plan, but it aligns with this larger process, it qualifies us to draw down state federal dollars. To implement, um, these things. So that's.
Can't, we don't have access to that money without paying the five thousand.
Right, being part of this bigger process. It's not redundant.
Well, we come up with our own complete streets first, so we say what we want. And then. Whether we, is that, whether we do it on our own or if we hire a consultant to do complete streets? And then we're going to rely on the county. To give us money. Or hope that they'll give us money? There's no guarantee, right?
It's, it's granted. This planning process is the first phase of then grants to in.
Will there be another application? We do another application? To get money from the rain.
Right, it's a second phase of funding. So this funding is only available for planning. And then the second phase of money that's coming down is available for grants.
So I guess my point is, can we be all done with our complete streets before we even get through this counting process?
Director Grupentraug, would you like to weigh in? Um, where, he's going to be the one actually putting together a process for complete streets.
Sure, yeah, I, um, thank you. I think it might be worth clarifying that complete streets isn't necessarily, uh, an actionable plan. It's a. Policy and process for how we will review and implement, um, uh, improvements moving forward. So, um, I view these as, as separate things that do feed into each other. What the county is proposing to, um, assist us with here is. Utilizing their consultants and their public feedback to provide specific areas of action within the Village of Shorewood. That then we could follow up with additional grants to get. So those would be specific areas. Whereas complete streets, the intention of drafting a complete streets policy is so that we have a review process and procedure in place. With public engagement and, and things of that nature that give us the opportunity to find those opportunities when they come up. Um, but the complete streets, um, actions will not be specific to, say, intersections or, or things of that nature. Whereas this action plan that the county is offering to, um, you know, to, to, to do for us if we contribute the five thousand dollars. Um, as I mentioned on June fifth, this plan is, is going to be worth, it would cost much more than five thousand dollars. It's not like. Um, they're not contributing their portions of the grant funding to help us out with this, but they did ask for local support. So. Um, I hope that clarifies that complete streets is not necessarily, um, a specific action. It's more of a procedure. Um, and what this process is going to be doing, including the June fifteenth meeting, is identifying areas within Shorewood and the greater county. Um, for specific fixes that subsequent grant funding could help us address.
And that would be something that the Bike and Ped Safety Committee in their process would review as well, and it's all industry.
So can you give me any example of what we might feel like if we get a grant, let's see, we decide we want to put. The wrought iron fences that they have west of. West of Wilson, we go through the village, there's a wrought iron fence in most of the medians on Capitol Drive. Let's say we decide we want those. On the east side of the vector two. Is that something we can apply for grant funds for? Or like, just give me an idea of what.
I mean, that grant does not yet available or drafted, so I can't speak to the specifics of what's going to be. Um, allowed or prohibited, but that does seem like something that a grant fund would be available for. Any sort of improvement? That would increase pedestrian or bicycle safety, I think is, is what the expectation is that the next, next round of grants will be available for. Um, so, yes, I, I think projects like that could be, um, available. Once again, if, if there's something identified in the action plan, that will then become eligible for funding. So if through this process, the county identifies. That that particular or that type of project would be beneficial, that would go a long way towards making it eligible. Without that in the action plan, we would not be eligible to even apply for, let alone obtain grant funding. So. Um, once again, there'll be opportunities hopefully throughout the next year to identify those specific areas. That then their consultant will put into the plan that will hopefully make it more, um, uh, potential for funding in the future.
So they'll make up an action plan and will apply for money. Will, will someone locally make this decision? Do you have any idea?
Yes, so there, the plan is based on feedback from our community. So it was, so that, um, in-person session was. One way, but then we put out the survey. And activities online. And then because we have a bike, that safety committee, we would coordinate, you know, there in this law.
And that's. Complete community, that's what it is. Is that the action plan?
Right. It's said in the, in the, that I like. Yes.
Good question. Uh, volume of the municipal is in county. Do you know how many others have spent?
It, I believe seventeen and nineteen.
I'll take that.
Yeah, yeah, I think this is great. This is exactly what we've talked about. You know, and I'm telling you, have more opportunities to collaborate with other communities than county and. And a man that way, so I think this is great.
Yeah, and Tracy could, uh, going off memory, I think it was seventeen or nineteen signed the letter of support for this stage. Um, of funding and grant, and I believe this might be closer to. Well, they're actually, we'll see like the road show, um, and. I don't know if you recall, and I am going off memory, so I just didn't want you to find here was lower than seventeen and be like, oh, you know.
No, my thought is. Do we all have the same skin?
Yes.
Five thousand in the game. And if you don't, if you didn't put five thousand in. But either excluding or it'll be.
Yes.
I mean, for.
No, yeah, you don't like buying, you don't get that.
And that's why they did the five thousand.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
And they also can, um, and this is, I think. There is room for other municipalities. If they kind of sit back and they watch and they say, oh, this would be helpful, or their residents have, or whatever, whatever process they go through. Um, I think there is a way for them to contact the county or with them, but it would be five thousand for that as well. Thank you for asking.
I did just pull up and, oh, sorry. I pulled up an email. Eleven communities have confirmed that they will submit action plans, um. Uh, River Hills will be confirming at a September board meeting and five others were asked to reevaluate or reconfirm. So I think the expectation is that around seventeen. Or thereof will end up moving forward. Eleven have so far committed. Um, and the other six that I mentioned, um, I, I believe the expectation is that they will, they're just needing to confirm it prior to, um, this fall, I believe.
Thank you. All right, do we have the motion on this anymore?
I move to support. For the development of a local safe streets action plan as part of Milwaukee County's Complete Communities Transportation Funding Project. Including a five thousand dollar local contribution from the village's twenty twenty four budget.
Since this is regarding twenty twenty four budget, it's not like we're just like. Giving them a bag of money and saying, right, I also can see that plan. I mean, it'll be obviously coordinated, uh, intergovernmental passion. So, uh, yes, Tracy Duncan.
I'm just reading this memo, which I think you just saw on my desk. Uh, there's something, you're applying for something and then a local match for ten thousand, so that would.
Which is, this is going to be discussed under my village manager's report.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? All right, motion carries six zero. Thank you, um. So we are moving on to public hearings, which we have none. Citizens to be heard, item eight. Are there any citizens to be heard this evening? There are no more, oh. Insult us, would you like to hear?
Oh, I can't really work with that much. No, it's hilarious.
Item nine, new business, nine A, considering extended D O absence for, um, John Mallon. I believe this is sent to us with the recommendation from Mr. E. Nellum this evening.
Uh, yes, Jeff, with the, uh. Humanist recommendation of the community, uh, excuse me. Would be feel a row the, I think about them.
Thank you, and there are no change.
To approval of the N B L V's absence for John Mallon, it's your September fifteenth, twenty twenty three, on seven eight.
Any discussion?
It was unpaid. Unpaid.
Anything known for the discussion is, um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries to clear. Moving on to nine B, update on this, complete lighting, dark side, dark side complaints. Um, per our discussion of the previous meeting, there is a new memo with updated information. Um, this is for update only. Are there, I guess we could ask. Questions at this time.
But it's really just an update based upon our last discussion. Uh, we, there was a lot of discussion of things coming here on the. Third, so I just wanted to make sure that people understood where we're at, and we'll be looking forward to engaging further into the discussion on August seventh.
I wanted to take that for, collecting other information. Nine C, consider award contract for sewer guy water flooding investigation. Is this coming from committee or is it coming straight to us?
Sure.
Yeah, all right, are there, there's obviously, uh. Normal presentation in our budget with a recognized, uh, contract. Of aqua. Um, is there a motion? Tracy Duncan.
I move a word of a contract to Aqu Wallace for this twenty twenty five water flooding project in the amount of thirty two thousand, five hundred twelve dollars in terms of.
Sorry.
Motion, Mr. Tracy Duncan, second, Mr. Tracy Duncan, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyway, any opposed? Motion carries six zero. Nine D, consider suspension of policy thirty two, conducting hybrid video recording meetings from July tenth through September nineteenth, coming from three to accommodate village hall renovations. Uh, there is a M R, I can, I believe we've received, um, information about this, uh, potentially coming. Um, so this is a request to, um. Conduct hybrid, or to send meetings and to meet virtually during the, um. Instruction so that, um, staff is displaced and walking out of this room does not have to, um, put away their materials to ready the room for other activities during that time. Would you like to add anything, Mr. E. Nellum? You got it?
Yep.
All right, is there a motion?
I just have a question. So. When we're here, usually there's nobody here. Um, but I do think, I mean, I'm thinking about budget and everything. I would like to see a way to still meet in person.
For, uh, with relationship to budget, my goal is to try to be back. Try, I mean, I don't know what the, the schedule is from the contractor, but I'd like, our budgetary meetings occur through the month of October, so I'd like to be back here. But, yeah, if not, we might just have to be in small rooms.
Right.
Yes.
It's our, it's, it's a priority to be in person. Which is currently scheduled for October. I mean, September. So I think we can accommodate that. You have any further questions?
I have a little motion. I'm going to approve suspension of policy thirty two from July tenth through September nineteenth, twenty twenty three, to allow virtual meetings for the village board. C D A, land commission and police commission to accommodate village hall renovations that allow volunteer committees that are not required to be recorded to utilize the committee room. Relocate to another location or meet virtually during this timeframe at the discretion of the chair, staff liaison.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Tracy Duncan, second, Mr. Tracy Duncan, any further discussion?
And so we're going to go to the village board meeting, committee room, in person.
I mean, during this period. Um, all I know is that this is what we're being asked for right now, and so we're considering it. I mean, this is gonna. Be, what, three meetings, right? Right, because.
Yeah.
We're meeting now for July, so we're not going to learn July, we're meeting, we'll have one in August. And then either one or two in September, depending on where things fall.
Correct.
At least, at least.
And we're experts with hybrid meetings at this moment, so. I just want to make sure, I don't have a problem with, with meeting online, um. I just want to make sure that the equipment is up to it. Uh, we haven't done it in a long while, and there doesn't seem to be too many problems, but I just want to make sure that. When we're on it and we're on it.
Yeah, we haven't done this format. We've done a full Zoom meeting with everybody. We haven't done this, so maybe. There will be trial and error situation with smaller groups before the village board has to navigate all this, make sure that we can accommodate, but I think.
I don't see, yeah, I don't see an issue, just because we use it daily.
Right, so I think, and what you're describing is. I think any issues we've had with this format is not the same. That's all about being on Zoom and people joining.
So I'll be.
Yeah, yeah. A good question. Reasonable, reasonable, yeah, so thank you for asking that. So, yeah, so there's a motion on the table, so, um. We can take a vote on this and if it fails, then we can, um. Present an alternative. All right, all those in favor of the motion as read. Um, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
None.
Any extensions? Okay, motion carries, um, five, one. Moving on to nine E, update on twenty twenty four initiatives. This is updated only, you know, um, action is required, so there's a memo that's, um. Summarizing what is forecast for next year. We have an invitation to the trustees to submit any additional, um, initiatives by July fourteenth for consideration at our August. That would be me. Any questions? All right, hearing none. We move on to item ten, reports of village officials. Village president, um. We completed, we submitted an article upon request to the municipality magazine about partnering, um, around social media. And I believe that's going to be in August or September.
I thought August.
Maybe in August. Um. And then I, for the parade tomorrow. Um, we have these cards with all of our names and contacts on them, and I thought it would be fun to hand them out in the parade. As, because we never use them, and they'll be updated sometime. So I'm going to fold them and I'll break them off, and if anybody else wants to help hand out, we can. Um, and of course, can you help them as well, though? But I just thought, I'm not only calling. Um, and I believe that's all that I have as an update at this time. Any other, uh, those trustee, trustee, first thing?
Yeah, just wanted to, um, kind of let everybody know that our youth baseball team, uh, Shorewood Little League has an all-star play this weekend, uh, or next weekend, I should say, well, this weekend, the seventh, eighth, ninth, at Spectre. Youth baseball team, Shorewood Little League, has an all-star play this weekend, or next weekend, I should say, well, this weekend, the seventh, eighth, ninth, at Spectre Field. So we're going to be hosting several teams from North Shore and West Bend will be coming in all weekend. To play games and it's going to be a lot of fun. Concession stand will be open. We'll have pizza pops, we'll have prime, and all sorts of other fun treats that the kids like. I guess while we're all here, DPW's here, I was wondering if I could just ask a favor from DPW on record, or I could just do it off record? I'll do it off of here. Can we just chat, can we just chat real quick after afterwards? But but, you know, we we've hired, you know, guys from the the brewers have come in and they've helped us just kind of. Level off our field and they've been working on our field, so we're really looking forward to putting our best foot forward. And making sure Shorewood shines not only on the field, but off the field as well this weekend. So. It's gonna be a lot of fun. I recommend you guys stop down and and cheer on the Shorewood Little Leaguers.
Is the schedule posted somewhere?
It's on the Little League district website and but I will make sure to 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 share it here with Rebecca, maybe she could share with the rest of everybody else.
All right, other reports? Yes, Tracy Doherty.
I just wanted to let everyone know that the represented from the senior elder. Senior Reis, and I'm not getting into this right, E S A P. Yes, thank you, and the Parks and.
Their services and advisory party staff. Yes, I was like, I'm gonna get that. Right.
So there, Gary Brown from the Parks and Public Spaces and Bashi Wood here from the Senior Resource Center. Submitted an application with proposals for improving pedestrian safety on Chapel Drive. And before we do a prompt response from staff, I looked at it and some of these are things that were recommended in the twenty. Seventeen safety grant and also in the twenty twenty marketing transportation study. So. There are very doable things that I think we can get done before the school year starts and do what we have to do, making.
Yeah, so. Maybe we have to call a special meeting, call a special meeting. Right, so the, yeah, they're going to follow the process. Thank you for that. We have to speed it up. Thank you for that update. Tracy, we're all done?
Oh, no, I just.
Okay.
I have something for items for future exploration. I'll wait till then. Just two items under my report, one of which is located at your seat. There is discussion tonight regarding those combined grant opportunities with the county through. The roadway safety. Improvement grant that Bart is working on, and we approved some additional funding for the planning process tonight. Bart had an opportunity to meet with the group for the first time on June twenty eighth, and there was an opportunity to perform some demonstration activities. Related to roadway safety improvements. So these would be demonstration activities that are discussed in our current plan that we could try out within our community and then. Based upon their success and how they worked, potentially include within our action plan. So in conjunction with how I said, hey, sometimes there are challenging timelines for grants, this would be one of them. So in accordance to what we've talked about, I'm bringing it to you under the scope of my report to let you know that. This is what he will be working on and submitting on. Second item, also grant related, was with respect to the police department. They're going to be working on submitting a grant to Charter Communications for. The donation of funds for purchase of a new ballistic. Shield that they have that's thirteen years old, which would be fully funded by Charter Communications. So I wanted to make you. So, well, shield or bust? Sorry, I don't, I'm not, I said shield. I think it's the shield. I gotta go back and.
It's a shield.
Lost, but, okay. Okay, good, thank you. So it is in there. So just wanted to let you know that they're in that process, and that concludes my report. Have a very wonderful July fourth holiday in our beautiful community.
Item one. Future items.
One thing that I wanted to read. For the board to consider was joining the Wisconsin Local Government Climate Coalition. It's something that. Came up before in conversation maybe two years ago. Or a year and a half ago, and then coalition was coming together. And at the time, it was when we were going through staff transition and it was. You know, just not something that. Staff had the capacity to take on, was just getting involved. But I would really like to recommend that we reconsider that process. I will. Copy out that as saying, I have done work for that organization, I'm not currently working for them right now. But I know their work and I think it's great, and I think Shorewood could be very well served by participating. And in coalition of communities, one of the ways that. That coalition operates is to help municipalities draw down federal funds. For some of these. Programs that are coming down under the Pollution Reduction Act and. By frozen infrastructure law, there's some grant writing capacity, so there are definitely benefits in being a member of the community.
How would we, we want to get that on an agenda for discussion? For back in the meeting.
You know, I I believe that the conservation committee actually has had a link to the coalition because they do forward us information. Yes, but Shorewood is not, we are not official members. That officially become a member and be able to, you know. Be part of the like. Any of the grant writing or any of those kinds of. Kind of benefits, we would need to pass a resolution on the body to be an official member. Yeah, I'd be happy to discuss it with Chris and come back.
We go to committee, committee?
I I'd like to discuss it with Chris and then perhaps come back. I know that he has some thoughts on it. There's none. Not that, not that I don't hear, I will say that. Not that I'm aware of either.
Yeah. I guess I just want to be clear for the purposes of future items consideration. So it sounds like. I just want to go back to Tracy. You were asking to put it on a future agenda for discussion. I mean, Andrew, you all did say that you would like to discuss it with assistant village manager and then come back with information. Is that acceptable to you? Like, you're done?
So, yeah, okay, okay.
I just wanted to make sure we didn't get lost in the room.
Okay. And then we have a strategic initiative that we want to consider that I heard earlier tonight.
Okay, okay. What was, what was it? You get your shot and you remember what it was.
What was that?
Yes, I recall probably it was also about opportunities to. Yeah, money, how many years to buy funding, never buy funding.
Oh, yeah, 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 we can do that. We can, we can, plus as soon as we can get a meeting on that. We can put that on the.
It will go on the list.
Follow up with you.
It will go on the list. Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, and then your questions? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Have a. Enjoyful and happy holiday.
Sounds great.
Free, good from Debra.
Free, oh, no.